Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Pachus? Ms. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Lane Gallus?
Here.
And Mr. Schollman?
Here. I am going to switch the order of business. It'll become quite obvious why, right after I do. We're scheduled for two public hearings. I'm going to move the second public hearing, 22 Lounes Avenue, 2022-35 sub D slash CAM to the first item. We're going to open the public hearing, and then we're going to continue it. Apparently, we don't have sufficient information to be able to move forward on this application at this time. So we'll, we'll continue it until the point at which we have that information. With that, we'll go back to 2022-31, R slash S P slash CAM, BPC Capital Management One LLC, Three Park Street, Buildings Own Regulation Text Amendment to Article 50 to reduce the minimum lot size for historic preservation development, and two new buildings with office space and other associated improvements. Let me explain members of the public who may be on this meeting, how we conduct these public hearings. First, the applicant will have an opportunity to explain the project, make their case for the project. During that explanation, the members of the commission will have an opportunity to ask any questions they wish. That part of the hearing does not allow for public comment. Once that section of the public hearing is closed, we will invite the public to speak. We will give everyone who wants an opportunity to speak on this matter to do so. We do not limit the amount of time you have to speak, but ask that in consideration of others, while making all the points that are important to you. You don't necessarily repeat what other people have said. To the extent you find it necessary, simply say that you agree with certain portions of what other speakers have, have already said. We ask that you be courteous. This has never been an issue. Excuse me. This has never been an issue in the past, but should it become necessary, we can cut you off. When we get to that section, one of the staff members will explain how you can access the meeting, how you can raise your hand to be called on. Again, when that section of the hearing is over, we will return to the applicant and give them an opportunity to respond to what we've heard. And again, during that period of the public hearing, commission members are more than welcome, actually encouraged, to ask any questions that they have regarding the project. When that is over, we will close the public hearing and move on to the discussion and possibly action on the application. With that, I'll invite whoever is representing the applicant to begin the presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Hope you all had a pleasant summer and a restful Labor Day weekend. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance Sandec in Tennessee, and I represent BPC Capital Management One LLC, which is the owner and applicant before you this evening. Also present tonight will be Brad Craighead. He is a principal in BPC Capital Management, and he's also an owner of several properties on the Green and on East Avenue. Wayne Devanzo of Fairfield County Engineering, he's the project civil engineer. Carl Giordano of SLR Consulting, the traffic engineer. Frank Dierno of Balance Architects, he is project architect, and also Todd Bryant of Heritage Resources, the historical architectural historian of the project. Notice to the neighbors was mailed on June 29th, advising them of the submission of the application. The certificate of mailing was returned to PNC staff for inclusion in the file. Three letters of support from abutting property owners were submitted with the application, and those came from adjacent property owner John Lesko, who was also a former planning commissioner, from the Human Services Council, and also from the Church on the Green. Notice of tonight's hearing was mailed to abutting property owners on August 25th by certified mail return receipt requested, and a packet was delivered to PNC staff today that include, included the green cards received as of today's date, along with copies of the letters for which the green cards were not yet received, along with UPS status updates for those letters. As Mr. Commissioners, excuse me, as Chairman Schollman mentioned, the applicant is BPC Capital Management One LLC. The property is Three Park Street, District One, Block Six, Lot Seven. The lot size is about 20,373 square feet, and it is within the East Avenue Village District Zone, as well as within the boundary of the coastal area management zone due to its location within 1,000 feet of the Norwalk River. The First Congregational Church is on the north. East Avenue is to the, Park Street is to the east. There are other developed properties to the south and west. Existing conditions, if Frank Dierno might be able, or someone could screen share a couple of photos of the property, they are included in part of the application documents. But while we're getting that ready, this project was presented to you in July. Later in the month, we appeared before the Harbor Management Commission, and it issued a recommendation of approval. We also appeared before the Historical Commission in early August, and it too issued a recommendation of approval. Existing conditions on the site, there's a two and a half story structure constructed around 1832, known as the Styles Curtis House. It's listed on the city's inventory of historic places and also on the National Register of Historic Places. Styles Curtis was a Norwalk merchant, politician, and founder of the Norwalk Savings Bank. So clearly, his history and his role and relationship to Norwalk have substantial value, and the structure and development of the site is worthy of recognition and maintenance. Currently, the Styles Curtis House is used as an office. There are also approximately 19 engraved parking spaces to the rear of the building. The proposal, as I said, which was first presented to you in July, is to maintain the Styles Curtis House, keeping the first floor as office and creating two apartments on the second floor, and then constructing two independent structures to the rear of the house. That's the front view from Park Street. We would propose to construct two smaller additions to the rear, which would then house, would have housed four apartments in each of those units. One would be called Carriage House, one would be called Stables. If all approvals are granted and secured, the end result would be the property would have this house remaining, the Styles Curtis House would remain, two structures in the rear, offering a total of 10 apartments, one of which would be an affordable unit, be restricted in accordance with your workforce housing regulations, and first floor office space on, at the Styles Curtis House as exists today. The one and two bedroom apartments would be in all of the structures. One bedrooms would range from 650 to 975 square feet, and the two bedrooms would be in the range of 1,100 to approximately 1,175 square feet. Two applications are before you this evening. The first is a text amendment application. That application seeks to reduce the minimum lot size for historic preservation projects from 30,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. The 30,000 square feet was generally an arbitrary number that was selected about two years ago in connection with the project on Wall, on East Wall Street. And it was only applicable to approximately five properties at that time, and that's the East Wall Street property, the Norwalk Inn, the St. Paul's property, First Congregational Church, and also Collins Funeral Home. 20,000 square, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size would allow anywhere between eight and 10 properties to possibly avail themselves of the historic preservation section of the East Avenue Village District, and it might create approximately 80 apartments, provided those additional lots meet the other requirements for historic preservation and have room to further develop. Sign offs received to date include the Fire Department, First District Water Department, and Health Department. We have received comments from Public Works, Transportation Mobility and Parking, and the Water Pollution Control Authority. Those comments have been reviewed and plans have been revised and resubmitted. So we anticipate that there should be no issues with final sign offs by those agencies. And certainly, you can make final sign offs a condition of approval. As I mentioned before, both the Historical Commission and the Harbor Management Commission issued positive recommendations to move this project forward. At this point, if you would be so kind, I'd like to have Wayne Devanzo, the project civil engineer, simply walk you through the site plan and answer any questions you may have in connection with the site plan. Following Mr. Devanzo would be Mr. Giordano of SLR Consulting to briefly describe to you the traffic analysis and what, what the determinations were made, what determinations arrived out of that analysis. And lastly, but certainly not least, I would like the final comments to be those of Mr. Dierno, so that he can describe to you what, what went into the, the creation of the new buildings to the rear and how those buildings architecturally fit and are compatible with the Styles Curtis House. So at this point, if Mr. Devanzo could run, walk you through the site plan, that would be great. I think that's up on the board right now.
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Wayne Devanzo, Fairfield County Engineering for the applicant. As you can see on the site plan, you've
Excuse me, Mr. Devanzo, can you blow that up a bit?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Frank, I don't have control of it. Frank, could you just zoom in a little on that?
Thank you.
As Liz outlined, the proposal is to construct two, two and a half story buildings to the rear of the existing two and a half story Styles Curtis House on the property. As you can see, but the rectangles that are shown there, this would create a total of 10 dwelling units. The parking is basically mostly reutilized. We will, you know, be creating or preserving 17 parking spaces for, for the development. We have mitigated the stormwater runoff for, for the increase, mostly due to the buildings for the increased runoff by providing 128 linear feet of concrete galleries, which you can see with that sort of checkered rectangle in the rear. Those will be underground, four foot deep galleries. The majority of the parking area is to be routed to that by retrofitting the existing catch basin that, that's in the, that's in the parking area and placing it with a curbless top and, and routing the runoff to it. And this reduces the, the net runoff from the site for the two through 100 year storms and also replenishes the groundwater. We have responded to the DPW and WPCA comments, which you perhaps see on this updated plan. They were fairly minor. The water valve was relocated or proposed to be relocated behind the property line from where it is now. The existing asphalt sidewalk in the front is to be replaced and and built to, to city standards. And the, the three trees in the front, which you can see there, are to remain and be protected during, during construction. Also, one other request was that a maintenance plan be done, and that was that was done and submitted. A maintenance plan for the stormwater retention and drainage items. And that is about, about it.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Devanzo at this point? Okay. Hearing on, if Carl Giordano could come on and provide you with some of the information from the traffic report. While he's getting ready, I just also wanted to let you know that this project underwent review by BFJ, the Village District Design Consultant. We had initial comments from Mr. Frank Fish. Those were responded to and plans were revised. We also received additional comments about a week and a half ago, and we've responded to all of those comments and whatever, and the vast majority of which have been implemented in by virtue of a written response by Frank Dierno. So we have design review consultant comments, and I think all of those have been addressed, and I think adequately and sufficiently. Mr. Giordano?
Hi, yes, this is Carl Giordano from SLR Consulting, 195 Church Street, New Haven. I have just a couple of slides to share. If you could stop sharing, Wayne. I'm gonna go through it pretty briefly, because nothing major on the traffic side of things here, so you should see the presentation momentarily. Okay, so going through it pretty quickly, our scope was to review our existing conditions along the side frontage in the area between East Wall Street and up to North Avenue. Things we looked at were area traffic volumes from other recent studies that were done, crash history, reviewing site lines from the side driveway. And we asked, used industry, industry standard data to estimate the new site traffic. And we have our conclusions from that and responded to comments from the city's TMP department, who reviewed the traffic study. Ultimately, the findings are such that the new traffic associated with the 10 units will be very low in either the weekday morning or afternoon peak hour. It's estimated that there would be five to six new peak hour trips. So it's very little. And with that, there would be no noticeable impact to the area traffic. The site distance that was, that exists at the driveway is sufficient and exceeds criteria from state and will continue to, to meet that criteria. The City of Norwalk Terrace Station Mobility and Parking Department only asked us to provide additional crash data before the COVID-19 epoch. So we ended up reviewing three years before COVID and the three years after. And the results from that analysis showed that there were no crashes directly at the site frontage or involving the side driveway in any way. Any other crashes that happened were unrelated. That really summarizes it.
Anyone have to have any questions for Mr. Giordano? Okay, hearing on, I'd like Frank Dierno to come on and screen share his plans, because I think that's the, the best part of this application, the, the interesting design and how it's, it complements the existing structure. So Frank, it's, it's all yours now.
Needed, Frank, if you're speaking.
That's better. All right. Good evening, commission. We'll try that again. We'll reboot, and this is the existing survey showing the Styles Curtis House facing Park Street, parking to the rear. The programmers of this property offered us an opportunity to pay homage to this prominent historic structure, the Style Curtis House, the Styles Curtis House. And, and I think the outcome is very responsive and sensitive to this property. We're proposing 10 units of apartments. One of the units is in the Styles Curtis House on the second floor. There is two pieces to this new addition. There, we call them two buildings, but they are connected. And to the south, we have facing on this property, we have four units, and to the west, we have five units. So then there's nine units in the additions, and one unit, Unit One is on the second floor, the Styles Curtis House, which I'd say is a pretty nice apartment unit to be. The the width of the site offer us this opportunity to not just propose a structure that would be one building. So with, with good intention, Brad, my client, had the similar idea of creating some space between the buildings. And what this offers is not only a backdrop to this original historic structure, but to just be sensitive of the spaces around the building. So with the parking in the back, what we did was we created a walk separating building facing south and the building facing west. These two additions have a walkthrough. I'll take you to the plan. This is the site plan that shows. This is really the first floor plan that is on the site. So parking is again to the rear. We didn't do anything to that other than adjust the space layout. There is a refuse area to the right as you come in from Park Street. There's but already original parking parallel coming into the site. When you park in the west side, you're actually facing the west side of the building, and where this noted open walk through is, you're able to see the green. This was a very intentional move from the beginning. After we separated the building to two vectors, was to be able to see the monument from the back of the building. This is where that walkthrough is. Very respectful of the Norwalk green. And so created an opportunity. So it's a little and a half feet between in this walkthrough going between these two buildings. So it's a go space. What that does is connect you to some open porches. Then respectful of what's happening to the Styles, the original Styles Curtis House, which has a beautiful front facade and covered porch. From the north side coming into this property, you actually have the same thing happening. So again, we touched the original building, but we interrupted it, and we did a walkthrough. So this walk is again coming in, which is actually a spot to locate the middle room. You're walking through this north-south into courtyard, which the creation green space. And so I'm gonna go to the elevations. Here is the elevation facing the parking Styles Curtis Houses in front. This again is the walkthrough that goes directly to the west side, to the parking area. As you walk through, you're able to see the Norwalk green. I'm a native to Norwalk, grew up here, and I have a lot of respect for where we're put in this project, and I can see that the intention by Brad from the start with all the projects that he's been involved with is always done the right thing. And I think you're gonna see, as we go to the south elevation, you'll see the new building to the left. This is the building facing south. And you'll see this south-facing Styles Curtis House. You'll see Park Street to the right. So these buildings are well set back. And again, we're not doing anything to this front of this building or the sides, only to touch it at the west part of the building. So the original structure is still intact. This is the west elevation. When you're coming in from the parking lot, the entry point is to the left. And again, there's that walkthrough. On the floor above, we offer, for the second floor and the loft areas, we're offering a balcony, which is again to have these tenants with open space and outdoor space offered to them because they're above the first floor. And there's the north elevation coming in from the entry point of Park Street, showing you again how the structures to the back, the new additions, are connected to the Styles Curtis House, but very sensitive to the building. Another walkthrough going from north to south is again in that building. We added another covered porch to connect to the Styles Curtis House on the first floor, and then above there, a covered roof. The proportions and scale of the additions are respectful of the lines of the Styles Curtis House, but we're not trying to match it. We're trying to pay respect to it, and it's, it's obviously the most prominent building on the site, and we're proud of that. We wanted to do that. That was intentional. It was deliberate. I think this will offer a great opportunity for new, for new residents and some natives to Norwalk, to be able to enjoy this Norwalk green that has been here for quite a long time, and I can tell you there's a lot of activity throughout the day, but there's actually more activity in the evening, especially this summer. Got it, having been on the site and just walked around, it's, it's pleasing to see all the activity at the green. And I think this will bring some more people to the community. So if you, on the lower level, we call this the plaza. I'm just gonna touch on that. So this is that lower level. So you're able to walk from these walkthroughs to a deck, which is the covered porch, and then there's a direct stair access down into this plaza level. So at this plaza level, subterranean, we have Unit Two and Three with window wells. Unit Two has, has direct access to this sunken plaza courtyard. So we have another extension of the recreation area on the first floor grade to a lower level to offer the same opportunity for these tenants, people living here to have open space, fresh air, and to be able to walk outside. Unit Six has the same. And then we go to the upper levels. I'm just gonna touch on this. So this is the second floor. You see, we have a community terrace deck connecting the building to the south and the building to the west. So this is offered with a separate staircase when you go through the walkthrough to this community terrace. And then on the same respect as the second floor has this other community terrace from north to south. You can see Unit One on the second floor of the Styles Curtis House, which again, I think has the best view and is gonna be enjoyable for someone living there. And then on the upper
Mr. Dierno, that second floor connection, are you considering that or counting that as amenity space?
Yes.
Okay. So you, you need that, you need that, do you need that in order to arrive at the required minimums?
No, it's not considered recreation space. What we're doing is we're bringing the people some outdoor connection areas in other properties that Brad has developed. There's really good opportunities that I've been involved with that more and more people are home, working. It offers them a place to go to take a break and not have to leave their property. And this has come up in the last project and I can tell you during COVID, there's more and more projects that involve some outdoor space for people to take a break. So that's what these terraces are offering.
Thank you.
And then this is the loft level for the other units showing the balconies, again, offering that space to be able to just walk out and get some fresh air and enjoy the park setting and the surroundings.
I'm sorry, Mr.
I'm gonna go back to the
It, does that just go outside from somebody's individual unit or is it off a hallway?
The community terrace, these, these upper second floor areas have a separate access stair through the walkthrough in both cases. So it's, it's a community stair that gets them to these locations.
Oh, okay. Not, not from the floor that they're on out of their apartment?
Well, this also offers access to unit four, unit eight from these terraces. So what we've done in this project is we didn't create one main hallway like a hotel to load everybody in and get everybody in their unit and say goodbye. What we're doing is we're offering spaces that are outside that gets people, get the tenants to be able to walk through some open space. The idea is really a germ from some of these communities. I went to school in Boston and the streets of Boston had many areas that were this way. There were spaces between buildings, the void spaces. And these spaces to me were the most unique and interesting. That's what we're trying to do with this. And then the intent is to have these connection pieces that are outdoors. It's another, another place to look at this Norwalk Green.
That's great. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Dierno?
Do you guys consider solar on the roofs at all on the new construction pieces?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Is there a reason for that?
There are some really historical trees on this property that are facing south and east. So I, I would, I would love to do that. It would be a great opportunity, but these trees are very mature.
Gotcha.
One other question. You're calling this a two and a half story building, but really it looks like a three story building. And I'm wondering, it doesn't look like it from your sketches, but the additions won't loom over the existing structure.
Correct. The, the sightlines of Park Street, you're only viewing this Stiles Curtis House. And you're really not seeing this building behind it. It's a backdrop. The, the green elevation, this east elevation, the proportions of the building to the left, which is facing south. Again, we're tying in the structure to the porch of the Stiles Curtis House, the scale of the building, which roof lines are actually lower than the lines of the Stiles Curtis House. If you look at the proportions of the mansored roof and the dormers. I, I think we paid homage to the, the building and it, it, we could, we are actually allowed to go even taller. This building was where at? Let me zoom in here. I'll show you. Twenty-eight feet, three inches to the median roof. We could go thirty-five and there's no reason to. This building is respecting that Stiles Curtis House and we're staying within the sightlines that offer people to enjoy this building behind the Stiles Curtis House.
One of the other things that was contemplated and, and came to fruition to, that resulted in two separate structures is so that it wasn't a, a large building behind the Stiles Curtis that would detract from it. That was another reason why the orientation of the two buildings are as they are, that there's open space, the view corridor, so that there wasn't just this massive building like you've seen in other locations on East Avenue that wouldn't complement the Stiles Curtis House, but would frankly detract from it. And I, I think this was a, a nice way of achieving that by create, having two buildings, yet having them connected. And those outdoor spaces do offer residents a community gathering place on their property that they don't have to go elsewhere. They can interact. They can meet with friends. They can have friends join them in these outdoor spaces. So that's a little bit unusual and something that we don't see in many of the developments today. But I think there's been an excellent attempt to respect the Stiles Curtis House and make, and create new, two new structures that are contextually appropriate.
Attorney Sachi, can you show us where the one workforce unit is going to be located?
Uh, no, I don't think that was something that we finalized.
I have it.
Did we? I apologize. Then can you show where that one is?
No, I have it. Yeah. Hold on one second.
Okay. Certainly we'll, we'll have a deed restriction document that gets recorded on the land records. That's accompanied by a copy of the plan showing the location of the unit.
Okay. This is the first level. If you're coming in, I'm just gonna go to the site plan. If you're coming in from the parking area to the west, you're going through the open walkthrough. Unit three is the entry point from this walkthrough. Here's unit three, and then it goes from unit three downstairs, kitchen, living area upstairs. And then here's a better look at unit three. This is that moderate income unit. And then unit three goes subterranean, offers a one bedroom and a living area, window wells in both areas. And we're talking about window wells that are egress capable and they're nine feet by three and a half feet. So they're, and if you go to the elevation, I'll show you now. You can see these windows are well above the, the gray line. So the natural light, light will be there and that is the moderate income unit three is. And it's listed in the zoning chart, seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, moderate income, one better.
Can you repeat what you said?
Six twenty-five.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions at this point?
Liz, would you like me to say something?
Sure, that would be fine.
Hi, it's Brad Craig, the applicant. I, I just wanted to say just a couple of words. First, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present this. I, I, I think by most people's standards, a modest development project at Three Park Street. And I'd only add that as a small business owner and with properties developed and managed exclusively in Norwalk, I'm really appreciative of the support that we've received from the city in all of its departments over the past seven or eight years since we've been in business. You know, our property management business is called Norwalk Green Living. And for those of us, those who know us, you know, our, our real goal here is to build community and partnership with the local leaders and the local leaders around the green and the properties that we own, namely the First Congregational Church and St. Paul's and Mill Hill Historic Park are really the kind of pillars of our community. And we work with them and, you know, amongst the footprint of properties that we develop into small scale rental apartment buildings. Uh, we didn't get into the history of this, but we've worked with Todd Bryant, who's on the line here. And in terms of the scale of the, of the buildings and the setback and the the sightline view from what you see from the sidewalk or across the street from the green, I can assure you that the additions, as we call them, are set back significantly from the street. It's very difficult to sort of get a sense of that from these, um, from these drawings or from the elevation. But that's the idea is to, is to construct something that's very much in keeping with not only the Stiles Curtis House, but the other properties alongside and around the neighborhood. Our property management business is called, um, in Norwalk Green Living and we're, you know, we're inspired by Norwalk's rich history and the handful of iconic properties that have, uh, have withstood the test of time. We don't compromise in design or quality or service. And we've helped bring many new renters to downtown Norwalk well before COVID. Many of whom have put down permanent roots in the neighborhood by buying homes in areas close by and are now raising families or enjoying all the Norwalk offers as empty nesters. So I think, you know, for those who, who take the view that development of rental properties in Norwalk is, uh, is bad for business, I would strongly disagree. I've had, I think I've been able to develop good relationships with, with our residents and encourage them to, uh, to buy in the area, Nor, Norwalk in particular. You know, if you're at all concerned about the scale or the design of, of, of this property, I would only encourage you to drive by any of the other five buildings that we own around the green. We're in it for the long run. These are rental properties that we then manage and rent out as landlords. The project that we're working on right now is ninety-six East Avenue, which was approved not quite two years ago. We're just in the final stage of construction on that. It's a similar eight unit mixed prop, mixed use property with a Greek revival design at the front of it. And it's located directly across from the Norwalk Inn. Last thing I'll say is just in terms of Three Park Street, we're very proud of the design and the concept, in particular, the, the sort of decentralized three small building configuration that Frank Dierno described, that's connected around the central courtyard that overlooks the green. But it also gives you this vantage point that when you drive into the parking lot and look to your left, or when you drive through the parking lot and park at the rear of the building, you look through to the greens. We very consciously created three separate buildings, which is a lot more expensive. But it gives you a real sense of small scale attractive density. As mentioned, for marketing purposes, we refer to them as the carriage house and the stables. And I think they really bring a, a great sense of, of, of outdoor space and complement the original historic home. There was some mention of the trees that are right along Park Street and we've had a number of discussions with DPW and others about, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to save those trees. We have no interest in removing any of the greenery around the property. Landscaping is critical to, in my opinion, to the appeal of these properties. And we'll do whatever we can to, to maintain that sense from, uh, from across the street and within the property itself. You know, these are classic New England style architecture and, you know, respectfully, if approved, I think we'll be able to preserve the Stiles Curtis House in a manner that then honors it and through its adaptive reuse as an, as an office building with an apartment upstairs. You know, all of these additions that we're talking about basically are covered in what's now a parking lot. So I think you'll, you, if you drive in there and look around a bit, you'll get a sense of how this, uh, this property fits in well with, uh, within the context of the buildings around it. So thank you for your time.
In terms of due diligence, just a, a couple of quick questions for, uh, Mr. Bryant. Todd, do you still serve on the Historical Commission? Uh, you're muted.
I've never served on the Historical Commission. I'm the president of the Norwalk Preservation Trust, which is an independent nonprofit, but I do not speak for them in this context. I'm an independent consultant.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Are there, um, other questions for any members, any other members of their team? If not, uh, we'll, uh, open this up, uh, to the public. Brian, you want to explain how the public can request to be recognized?
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak regarding this application, you could use the raise your hand tool at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Um, and then in the meantime, um, what I'll do is just quickly pull up uh, the referral to DEP for the text amendment. Um, so that could be included in the record. Um, so with text amendment applications, especially in the coastal area management zone, they're required to be referred to DEP. Um, so we had done so. Um, they found it generally consistent with the Coastal Management Act. So just make note of that. I was also referred to the Harbor Management Commission, who made a finding of consistency with the Harbor Management Plan. Um, I believe we referred it to West Cog too, who made no finding of significant impacts. So again, for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. Not seeing any, um, but Liz, I'm not sure if you'd like to discuss staff suggestions to the changes to the proposed text?
Sure. Um, actually I'd call on either you or Steve to talk about, uh, the memo that, uh, you prepared for the commission.
Sure. So, um, quick rundown. So staff made two edits to, uh, the applicant's proposed text. And the applicant proposed to reduce the minimum lot size requirement in the East Avenue Village District for these type of developments, the historic preservation developments from thirty thousand square feet down to twenty thousand square feet. Staff suggests just eliminating the minimum square footage requirement, um, which is consistent with what this type of uses in other zones, the de residential zone, central business district. There's no minimum lot size required in those zones. So we think it's appropriate just for consistency's sake to mirror that here. And then one other edit was, um, to remove, there's a cap on the number of units that could be included in a property. Um, we think that that number, it's set at thirty-six units, um, just to remove that text, um, basically because there's only really a few properties that could actually go above that with the, with this language. So, um, with that, you know, and most likely on those properties, we're not gonna like, likely see them be redeveloped. So, um, I think for consistency's sake with the rest of the regulations, we just make it line up with everything else.
Okay. Uh, with that explanation, uh, let's, um, hold it open again and, um, see if, um, members of the public wish to comment.
So again, members of the public, uh, with that new information, if you'd like to speak, uh, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. Seeing none, Lou.
Okay. Then we will, um, close, uh, the public. Then uh, we will um, close uh, the public comment uh, period. And uh, we'll go back uh, to Attorney Sachi for any uh, closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing that there are no comments by the public, I, I appreciate the opportunity to just provide some last comments. Uh, in addition to the re- re- elimination of the lot size requirement either in total or to reduce it from thirty to twenty, this project meets or exceeds all the requirements of section one eighteen, five hundred B, the East Avenue Village District, including density, the forty percent building coverage, seventy percent building and parking, uh, the parking requirement, recreation area. The building is listed on the local historic registry as well as the National Register of Historic Places, and that's one of the component parts for you to even consider uh, historic development. The Styles Curtis House will remain and be upgraded in a way that's reflective of its architectural history, consistent with the comments by BFJ, your village design consultant. And no relief of the height and bulk requirements has been sought in connection with this application. It also meets the standards of review set forth in section one eighteen, fourteen fifty of the zoning regulations, and those are the standards of review for special permits. And those are density of use, stable traffic flow, availability of wheels buses, uh, site served by utili- by all utilities. Uh, the residential use will have no impact by virtue of noise, odor, dust, fumes, artificial lighting. Any signs that are proposed, none are, but any signs that will be proposed will meet the requirements. Yards and open space, screening and buffering all meet the requirements. Um, existing land uses in the area are very consistent with this, multi-family residential, medical office, general office, uh, houses of worship and other similar uses. The Wall Street Theater, Norwalk Green, Community Room of City Hall, and the Norwalk Concert Hall are all within close proximity. It complies with the zoning code and advisory plan of conservation development, December twenty nineteen. There are no onsite wetlands or watercourses, and there are certainly no uh, zoning violations on the property. I'd also just like to take this opportunity to recognize the efforts of Mr. Craighead, Mr. Dierno and others. Their dedication and attention to this project and this property certainly serves as a um, something that others should aspire to and, and, and duplicate. It's con- contextually, architecturally and historically appropriate. Uh, a development that, that I'm, in my opinion, deserves your approval, and certainly Mr. Craighead deserves your, your praise and congratulations for the hard work and dedication that he has demonstrated to make this project and the, the Norwalk Green a viable place to live. Uh, without any further comments or questions from the commissioners, we close our presentation and look forward to your decision.
Thank you. Um, all right, uh, let's uh, first things first, um, uh, the um, uh, a change that um, um, the applicant requested uh, uh, going from thirty to twenty thousand uh, square feet. Um, is there a motion to either um, approve that or alternately uh, to approve the language suggested uh, by our own zoning staff?
I would move to approve the zoning staff recommendation.
Okay, uh, Richard moves to approve the zoning staff uh, recommendation. Is there a second? Uh, Tammy um, uh, has uh, seconded. Uh, can you put that language uh, up for us, Brian?
Sure. So this is just how the text will read. And then here is the reasons and consistency with the P O C D.
Okay, um, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Um, are there any questions um, regarding uh, the document itself? All right, if not, uh, let's vote on this. Um, let's make it a roll call.
That's, I'll do, it's fine. Um, let's see. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yep.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. And uh, the second part, um, uh, approval of um, uh, special permit for um, uh, the uh, project uh, to go forward. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion move.
Okay, uh, Tammy's made the motion. Galen, were you seconding? I couldn't tell. Okay, Galen, Galen seconds. Um, uh, Brian, can we pull that up?
So quickly, um, we had sent the draft resolution and one quick addition, which was just regarding those trees in the right of way to make sure that those are included as being preserved.
Right. Okay, uh, any questions or comments uh, on um, the draft resolution?
Lou?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I, I'd like to compliment that applicant um, on being so respectful of the existing structure. And I think as if we get other applications like this and we have approved, um, you know, something on East Wall Street, something over on Stevens Street that are similar preserving an existing structure and adding apartments to the back that we can even encourage the applicant to be more um, historically sensitive like this application is um, trying to do. I think this is one of the better looking ones. And I, I mean, it's nice, it's on the green, and so a lot of people will see it. And I think we can, as the commission or as the, like, planning and zoning, try to encourage this type of development. Thank you.
Uh, other comments? Um, I, I, I think this is a good application. Um, the, the one hiccup, uh, at least in, in my view, architecturally, uh, are those second floor connections. Frankly, frankly, they, they, they remind me uh, of uh, motels. Uh, so I'm not a great fan of them, but uh, none of the reviewers said anything about that. Um, and I think otherwise it's a, you know, it's a very good uh, program uh, that we uh, have here. And we'll have a chance to review that once this goes up. And if we find it objectionable, we won't approve that sort of thing in the future. Um, if I'm wrong and turns out to be a valuable amenity, um, that would be even better. Um, uh, any other uh, comments? All right, if not, let's go to a roll call.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and attention.
All right, we're going to move on to uh, um, review and action on uh, applications. Um, the first is fifteen sixteen S P, one fifty, one sixty, one seventy Glover LLC, one seventy Glover Avenue. Uh, the curb building, uh, sea bond release. I think I saw Attorney Waters. Attorney Waters, you're mute, there you go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, thanks.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's two requests before you this evening. Uh, now that we've completed uh, building C at the curb. Um, the first one is the release of the sedimentation erosion control bond uh, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, all of the site work has been done. I believe your staff has been out to confirm that everything is fine, and I believe that they've also discussed it with Public Works. Um, the other request is that as part of the approval of the three buildings at the curb. Um, so the, the commission wanted to be sure that the segment of the Norwalk River Valley Trail that uh, is located on the northern side of building C was actually being built. Um, and so they allowed the first building, building A, to be built without any uh, issue at all as it related to the Norwalk the River Valley Trail. When building B was built, uh, there was a requirement that we post a five thousand dollar bond um, to uh, ensure that uh, the site work was actually done on the building C property when it was uh, developed. And again, since building C has now been developed, uh, and the NRVT segment that is on our property has been built. Uh, we're asking that that uh, bond be released as well. So those are the two requests.
Okay, uh, these uh, release of uh, bond requests are um, fairly uh, routine. Uh, as long as um, uh, the uh, staff uh, indicates that the work's been done, uh, we routinely approve them. Um, and Steve, that, am I correct? Uh,
Correct. Yes, all, all inspections are completed. All required work has been uh, done at this point.
Okay. Is there a uh, motion to approve uh, release of uh, these two bonds?
Don't move.
Okay, uh, Darius moves and looked like Heck, Hector second. Um, I think we can do this one with a show of hand. Uh, first, uh, any comments on this? All right, if not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Looks like it's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, next on uh, the uh, agenda, uh, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, uh, R slash S P, Norwalk Hospital, thirty-four Maple Street, Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to Article forty-four Hospital Zone and Special Permit uh, Application to Construct a Nine-Story Addition to the Existing Hospital. And this is our preliminary uh, review. And if I may, uh, Attorney Sachi, are you representing the hospital?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Again, for the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Harmony Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stanford. And I represent the Norwalk Hospital Association, which is the owner and applicant on the text amendment and special permit applications that have been submitted. Uh, also joining me this evening are the following individuals that, from whom you may have some, have some uh, presentation tonight. I know this is a preliminary discussion, and I know that your desire is to keep the, keep it relatively short uh, as we move forward through the process. They will certainly have longer and more detailed presentations. In any event, Steve Ansell is principal in the SLAM Collaborative, which is the project architectural firm handling the project. He is available. Daniel Granis is landscape architecture, architect, and also, also with SLAM Collaborative, as well as Rob, Robert Petrie, a senior associate architect. Charles Croce is civil engineer with Ty and Bond. David Keith is on la- on the line, and he is the se- senior project manager with NuVance, NuVance Health, as is John Sterry, NuVance's vice president of planning and design. The application for text amendment and special permit were submitted on July twenty-eighth. Neighbors were notified of the submission by certificate of mailing on August fifth, and the certificate of mailing was submitted to the zoning staff and should be in the file. As mentioned, the applicant owner of the property is the Norwalk Hospital Association, Inc. The location is generally Stevens Street and Maple Street, District One, Block Six, Lot One. The project, property is approximately fifteen point seven acres in size. We call it the hospital campus. And the zone is the hospital zone. Clearly, that's the only zone in Norwalk that is, the only property in Norwalk that is own HC or hospital zone. The property is generally bounded by Stevens Street to the south and east, Maple Street to the north, and Rodinolia Court to the west. Little bit about, um, in history on the hospital, for those who may not be that familiar. Norwalk Hospital opened in the late eighteen eighties. In its hundred and thirty-five years of existence, it's grown to meet the health and medical needs of Norwalk and the surrounding communities and the ever-changing medical landscape, providing the latest care in medical, surgical and wellness from wound care and bariatric, bariatric oxygen therapy to gastroenterology, pediatrics, orthopedics, cardiac, cardiac care and other specialties. Norwalk Hospital is the city's largest employer and is an acute care and academic hospital. The campus includes a variety of structures, uh, starting with the original building constructed in eighteen ninety-one, followed by the Tracy Building in nineteen eighteen, the Bedford Building in nineteen twenty-nine, the Dana Pavilion in nineteen sixty-two, the main pavilion with its additions in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, ninety-two, ninety-three and ninety-seven. And in twenty fifteen, the ambulatory pavilion was constructed. Norwalk Hospital is a member of NuVance Health, which is a seven-member system of hospitals that includes not only Norwalk Hospital, but Danbury, Waterbury, the Vassar Brothers Medical Center in New York, as well as North and Duchess New York Hospital Center. The proposal before you is to create the use and occupancy of a brand-new patient pavilion so that Norwalk Hospital can meet the medical needs and health needs of Norwalk residents and those in surrounding communities. So two applications have been submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Planning and Zoning Department for review, consideration and ultimate action. The first is its own text amendment, and that generally deals with uh, increasing the maximum number of stories for hospital from six to nine. And also to eliminate the restrictions on the maximum square footage of roofs, rooftop stairways, elevator returns and other types of vestibules on the roof. We received staff comments yesterday and are reviewing them internally with respect to the proposed text. And we expect to uh, schedule a meeting with staff in upcoming days to share our comments and concerns about the comments and revisions that staff have proposed. And I'm certain that we can collectively arrive at appropriate language to present to the public hearing that meets the needs of Norwalk Hospital both now and in future years, and also addresses concerns of staff. Second application is the special permit application specifically for the new structure and associated site improvements. And just generally, the new structure will, the new, the, the proposal for the new structure includes the removal of about a hundred and seven thousand square feet of existing outdated space. Includes the removal of about a hundred and seven thousand square feet of existing outdated space. And the creation of a hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet in a multi-story new patient pavilion. Which also will have an expanded lobby, an ICU, PCU floor, two surgical floors. A floor dedicated specifically to women and infants and other space. This proposal does not increase the number of hospital beds. But also does contemplate the relocation of some services, uh, such as outpatient behavioral office and the Divida Center. To other locations, both in Norwalk at fourteen Westport Avenue. Or to the uh corporate headquarters in Danbury or to a location in Westport. All of this is an effort to modernize the hospital campus. And to move forward to single patient rooms and to bring twenty-first century care to patients in the community.
Liz, um. May I uh ask um? Whether any of the services that are being relocated to Danbury are medical services?
They are not. Those are um more clerical billing and similar services, but not medical services. The only service patient-related is the outpatient behavioral uh services, and those are being relocated to fourteen Westport Avenue in Norwalk. At this point, um, I'd like to turn it over to Steve Ansell, who can certainly describe to you. Excuse me, the design and development of the new patient pavilion with. By far better expertise and clarity than I could ever provide. So at this point, if I could turn it over to Steve.
Uh, thank you, Liz. Steve Ansell, uh, principal and architect with the S L M Collaborative. Hastings, Glastonbury, Connecticut, uh, representing Norwalk Hospital. Um, I think Liz actually uh did describe the basic idea and organization of the building. Uh, key to this is to modernize not only the, the nursing units and patient care areas. They're moving into the new building, but essentially I bring to a contemporary standard. All the nursing care within the hospital. So it's a real transformation of all the beds that are furnished to patients. Uh, within the hospital. This is done by. Um, uh, essentially building the four occupied floors Liz mentioned. Uh, there's a ICU PCU floor, twenty-eight beds, two medical surgical floors of thirty beds apiece. And a um, a mother-baby floor, which is not only in the new building, but extends into the seventh floor. So on the seventh floor of the new building and extends into the seventh floor of the existing patient tower. Uh, which essentially doubles the space allocated to uh um maternal and childcare. Uh, within the hospital and uh and completely realigns the nature of that facility. What this also does is it removes from the oldest buildings on the campus. There will be no inpatient care. Uh, continuing in the older buildings that will remain on the campus that are aligned along Stevens Street. Uh, bring up a site plan. I can share this successfully. Shouldn't be this. Can people see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Okay, this is a D A P drawing data accumulation, data accumulation plan showing the existing hospital campus. Um, there are two parcels of the campus, but it's considered and treated from a zoning point of view as one. Intiguous area split by Stevens Street, Maple Street is here. The existing uh two buildings that Liz mentioned that are slated for demolition is. The oldest building on campus, the Tracy Building, which dates from nineteen eighteen, and the Community Pavilion, which is from nineteen sixty-two. They represent about a hundred and seven thousand square feet. The main existing pavilion, which you easily can see perched up on the hill is the main pavilion. Was built in the nineteen seventies, but expanded in nineteen nineties from seven to nine stories. So that will. Is and will remain the tallest building on campus. Uh, when we take down these two buildings, uh, the new complex will look like this. And what we're essentially doing is building a new inpatient pavilion that ties into the existing building. The front door is access as it is now. From the top deck of the parking garage, parking structure here. It's quite amazing that this whole hospital is built into a hillside that traverses almost a hundred feet of elevation from. The Stevenson Maple Interstex and back to the. Run, run to Olya Drive Park or Run Nolio Drive. Side of the hospital. So it's all built into a steep hillside. And we're taking advantage of that tying our new building into uh the existing building. It's notable, and this can confuse some people that, that the floors, when you count floors, they're based on the historic older buildings. Which are, uh, you know, that, that, so you'll uh see floors one through five in the existing buildings. But they were all built at such a tight dimension or height floor to floor. That when they built the new main pavilion, they started skipping floors to get enough height. To build contemporary medical systems into a hospital. So the occupied floors in the new building, the main pavilion or the main tower. The McGraw Pavilion or the McGraw Ambulatory Building that was just completed, and our new building go one, three, five. And then from there on up, it's uh, uh, six, seven, eight, nine. Uh, our new building will only extend to the seventh floor, connected, as I mentioned. Into the uh existing main pavilion to get that larger footprint to accommodate mother baby. Um, at the very base of the building, essentially below the elevation of the garage deck is a very large. Mechanical space, it's almost thirty feet tall, that is, will be packed with all the mechanical systems. That are required to run a contemporary building of this type. Uh, so that's the basic layout. There is no front door to this building. The front door will remain the main hospital entrance. However, as there is now crossing Tracy or crossing Stevens Street, uh, there's an entrance into the Tracy Building for staff. Will park over in the Stevens Street Lot, and we will recreate that entrance in our new building for staff. That is a. Access-controlled entrance just for staff. So there really are no public entrances off of Stevens Street with the exception. Of a small entrance into the Dana Building. It's a current entrance that accesses some physician practice spaces in that building. Main public entrances are the, the, the entrance from the top of the parking deck. And then there are multiple other entrances along Maple Street, the entrance to the McGraw Pavilion, and the main E D entrance here. As well as the entrance to the Cancer Center. So they're all lined off and accessed from Maple Street. Um. Just in terms of the height and configuration of the buildings, just briefly show you. A typical floor. I don't want to dwell on this unless, you know, there are questions. Uh, so here actually is a. Is a typical floor plan. This happens to be the fifth floor. Um, which is a medical surgical floor, and they're all very similar. There are patient rooms uh arranged around the perimeter of the new wing, a very large core of. Uh, elevators serving both the visitors and the patient transport and service side. Uh, the building is tied in at every occupied floor into the main pavilion. And also where we are aligned with the older buildings into what it remains to be the Bedford Building. Which was built in the twenties that will continue to utilize. Um, so, so the patient rooms are arranged around the perimeter. The middle is all the staff storage and support functions that make uh modern nursing unit work. And that's how that's organized. Um, and then if we skip down to a couple more. Here we go. So this, this elevation view gives you an idea of the relative height. Here's the existing. Main pavilion. It's a nine-story building. Where, you know, nine stories counted as I just mentioned in a rather curious way. It goes one, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I'm sorry? So, and then the um, the existing, the new building that we're proposing. Uh, lines, the top of the building aligns with the seventh floor, and the base of the building is all those necessary mechanical spaces. That make it run. Uh, and then there are some views, uh, that will come up. There we go. Uh, just of the building, here's a view as you arrive on the top parking deck. That canopy is there. That's your main entrance canopy, and in lieu of the. Um, current community pavilion, you'll see this, the new patient tower from the top of the parking deck. An aerial view and a view from Stevens Street just to get a sense of how the building is organized. Like, I don't think I'm going to spend a lot more time this evening, um. Because I know you want to keep this brief, but obviously there'll be more time in future meetings to cover this in great detail.
Are you considering solar or anything on the roof?
Uh, we haven't as of yet. It's feasible to put because we have a big flat roof area here in the building. We could certainly accommodate some significant solar. If it, if, if it makes sense in terms of their overall energy model.
Yeah, I think it'd be important to look at as you're going through this with us.
Mr. Ansell? What is the present use of the space that you're planning on demolishing?
So the existing buildings, which we are vacating now, uh, consist of um. A, a closed pediatrics unit. It was closed pre-COVID. Um, there is an inpatient uh behavioral unit. The very large use of the building, as Liz mentioned, was, is actually outpatient behavioral. It's about twenty thousand feet in that building. That is being relocated within Norwalk. And then the balance of the building, as is typical in these older hospital buildings, it was originally intact. It was the hospital at one point. And uh, but now it's, it's mostly office-based, so departmental offices. Department of Surgery, Medicine, Obstetrics, uh, Engineering Departments and the like, as well as a number of other service functions. Uh, the Medical Records Department is in this building. We mentioned that that group is being moved off-site as well. So that is, that's the existing uses uh of the, of those two buildings.
Is it fair to assume that other than the normal? Interruptions of construction, then it's not going to really interrupt the function of the hospital then, it sounds like.
That's, that's correct. We are in the process of relocating and vacating those two buildings. As, as we mentioned, some things are being relocated off-site. Some things are, some departments were actually relocated. A while ago when they, when the consolidation system happened, so. Departments such as the marketing department and the like moved to their corporate headquarters up in Danbury. And then there, there's actually a building on the um, south side of, of Stevens Street, which was a former DeVita. Uh, uh, dialysis facility. DeVita is relocated within the city of Norwalk. And that's about a ten thousand square foot building that will accommodate a variety of offices that are currently. Occupy the existing buildings. Uh, notably, actually, I didn't mention what's in the. Uh, top floor of the community building is their whole I T group that's serving the hospital. So that's a major, will be a major new tenant of the DeVita Building. Those projects are under construction now to decant the existing building and be able to be in a position to proceed forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Ansell. And when you started thinking about this, um. And you were saying that you're not going to add any more patient beds. Given the fact that the city of Norwalk is um going to be adding a lot of residential apartment units up on merit. Seven. I'm wondering, you know, will you have enough, enough capacity? Um, when there was pandemic, you know, we were hearing about hospitals all being full. Um, a, any of your thoughts would be appreciated on that.
That's um, that's a very good point. The, the um. During COVID, um, the hospital found a way to accommodate many more beds, and we always look at the. Uh, we look at the hospital in terms of its licensed beds. As well as uh, as well as how many available beds it has and how many staff beds it has. And um, and what we have in the building is we have well in excess of the numbers of staff beds that it currently operates at. And essentially what we're going to do is we will have, you know, all the beds we need for actually beyond the current everyday. Uh, need, but um, that the hospital will, it's designed to allow it to surge. In terms of higher levels of occupancy, still within its license, we're always. Saying that the license, with the historic license, the hospital is three hundred and sixty-six beds. And that includes some ancillary services, but. And not just the medical, surgical or intensive care beds. But uh, with that, we're able to surge the number of beds significantly to accommodate. Um, uh, not only a pandemic event, but also just normal growth. For example, the, the hospital and the medical surgical units uh typically staffs on the order of a hundred and twenty-one beds. Uh, we plan to have a hundred and thirty with a easily open additional thirty-eight to get to a hundred and sixty-eight. And we're projecting a need in the second half of this decade on the order of a hundred and sixty beds. For just the medical surgical, that's your normal acute care and exclusive acute of, of uh. Intensive care or mother, baby and the like. I'm just using that number as an example. So there's definitely plans to allow the hospital not only to. Deal with the population growth. We've been tracking that carefully, but also uh deal with uh. But what the reality of what we just went through, hopefully not to return anytime soon for in the COVID pandemic.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just to clarify, how many beds does the hospital have now?
Well, the, the hospital, as I said, it's, it's staff total, and, and it's, you got to look at it a couple of different ways. If we look at just the medical surgical and intensive care beds. They have available uh two hundred and twenty-five and they staff a hundred and thirty-seven. And, you know, what we're planning is to accommodate a hundred and eighty with an available surge to get you to two hundred and fourteen.
Thank you.
Um, do you know how many jobs in, are we losing net jobs in Norwalk with the? Group that's moving to Danbury?
Um, a few, but not a lot. I think all told, there were about fifty people being moved to the Danbury site. And when we tracked that and went through the programming, so most people, the vast majority of the employees. Are your clinical staff. And your, and all the support staff that serves the clinical needs of the hospital, and they will stay in the hospital.
Thank you.
Because that operates on a twenty-four, seven basis, as it has to. So it's, it has a tremendous staffing requirement.
One more question, if I may, with, I think there's a trend in the um insurance. Industry for health insurance to have patients have as many. Non-emergency procedures outside of a hospital because the hospital costs are so much higher. Is that something that you're anticipating in this construction?
Well, that's kind of the, that is the push and pull of running an inpatient hospital. You know, the hospital a number of years ago. Um, built an ambulatory care building for the kinds of complex procedures that. Need to be in the hospital. So the cancer center is there, the um, G I facility, the main G I facility is there. The ambulatory surgery facility is there, but there also are. Significant outpatient facilities, and there's a very large inventory of outpatient. Facilities affiliated with NuVance Health and with Norwalk Hospital. For example, the large. A complement of outpatient care facilities over in I Park. You know, off of Route seven that is part of the uh outpatient, and the hospital's looking to expand. Its uh other outpatient facilities within the Nor, Norwalk area. So that's not necessarily within the hospital.
Any other questions for Mr. Ansell at this time, considering this is preliminary? And would you like to hear from um Charles Croce of Ty and Bond? Uh, very brief on the civil engineering or would you prefer to wait?
I think, yeah, I think, I think we can wait on that.
Okay. Uh, and at the next meeting, the traffic engineer, Chris Granatini will be available. He had a conflict this evening. But recognizing that you wanted to keep this brief, um, he's, he'll be available next, and certainly whenever you schedule a public hearing, everyone will be available for that. Which brings me to the question, do you have a timetable that you're looking to, to perhaps schedule this for a public hearing so we can work toward revising plans? Discussing the text amendment with staff and the revisions necessary and concluding our revisions and submitting them prior to the hearing.
Yeah, typically, uh, we rely on staff uh for that, uh, Steve.
Yes, we were, uh, you know, obviously. As attorney such he indicated, we just sent them um some revised thoughts on text amendments, which we're hoping will simplify things for them and us going forward. Um, so they haven't had a chance to digest it and see what, to make sure it makes sense for them, so. Hopefully we can do that in the next week or so, uh, but we're maybe looking at um. The first October meeting seemed like that was the logical spot. Um, just looking at the agenda, which I was going to show you guys at, you know, at the business end of the meeting later on.
I think that would be fine. We've also received comments from uh various city CAC agencies, and we're working through those. I would like to be able to respond to all of the agency's comments with one set of revised plans. And I, I think it's perfectly uh appropriate that we'll be in a position to set up. And I think it's perfectly appropriate that we'll be in a position to set up a time next week to meet with Steve and Michelle and other staff members to share the concerns and come to conclusion on text amendment language.
If I may, how, how long is construction anticipated to take?
Then the main building will be approximately two years. It's from start to finish. We're reserving about three months for demolition. And then there's some backfill renovation. The major renovations, for example, completing mother, baby, and, and expanding the lobby will happen concurrent with the new building construction. But there are certain things that just can't happen until the new building's done. So, those, you know, maybe another six months of backfill.
Okay, thank you.
Well, at this point, if anyone has any further questions or comments, we'd be happy to hear them and answer them. If not, we look forward to the next committee, commission meeting. If you place us on that agenda, and certainly we'll work hard to wrap things up so we can go to public hearing first meeting scheduled in October. That would be great.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item, 2021-31 SPR, STLJ LLC and 100 Westport Avenue LLC, 126 Westport Avenue, AKA 80 and 100 Westport Avenue. Modification to approved site plan review for additions and renovations to existing retail buildings, Stu Leonard's. And who this evening, Liz, are you going to? Okay.
You all didn't have to listen to me earlier, later last month. So, now you have me for the whole night. I apologize. And thank you again, Liz Sachi of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy, and also present on the call, as Doug Hem said, Director of Facilities and a former Planning and Zoning Commissioner. As you may recall, last summer, we appeared before you and you graciously approved requests to expand, modify, and upgrade the existing Stu Leonard's facility with about a 10,000-square-foot addition. Zoning and building permits have been secured and construction has commenced. We're before you this evening because the, the proposed, and the approved and proposed plans are slightly different for one section of the addition. And Mr. Kleppen, I don't know if you're able to screen share that, that plan that I forwarded to you today. But if not, there is a section between the, the entrance and one of the additions, that there is going to be a tent in the middle. There it is. That is, this is as proposed, as approved back in August of 2021. The tent was going to be where the farmer's market would take place year-round. After further discussions and evaluating it a little bit more, it's been determined that it would be better if that farmer's market area was enclosed, both from an aesthetic perspective, from a functional perspective, and also there's a utility chamber that's in the rear of this facility, this portion of the building, that would be better situated in an enclosed. So, there's, there's no additional square footage. There's no additional FAR. Those numbers have all been calculated in the approved plans from last year. Those don't change. There's no additional parking required. But in discussions with staff, it was determined that it would probably be appropriate for you to just see this, so that once construction is complete, no one wonders, well, this is not what I remember was approved, and how did all this happen? We just wanted to be completely transparent and upfront with you as to the change that we'd like to implement. And that's it.
Commission members have any questions about this change?
Yeah, I have one question. Is it possible to put solar panels on the roof of the new building or on the parking lot? You know, the field parking to do so of this, the field parking?
I'll leave that to Mr. Sullivan. Ray Sullivan is on the line as well as the Sullivan Architectural Group and Mr. Hempstead. Gentlemen, any ideas?
Yeah, yeah, so this is Ray Sullivan of the Sullivan Architectural Group. I, you know, I, I think what happens is that the, you know, the, the solar panels, you know, are very effective when you're talking about a domestic residence or maybe a smaller structure, but the, the, the electrical demand and the wiring as such is so complex. It's, you know, it's difficult to take a handful of solar panels, you know, and get it to tie into the system. So, you know, the, you know, the value of it, you know, is, is extremely minimal on a high-energy use as this. And, and, you know, the majority of the roof is flat, you know, in, in the entire building, you know. The garden center, the, the new farmer's market, you know, you know, will have a pitched roof, but, but half of that will face north. So, you know, there's, there's, there's a little opportunity to put a, a solar panel on. And, you know, again, the complexities of the existing system make it difficult to utilize.
Have you ever taken a really good look at it? Like Wegmans at first said, oh, couldn't possibly be done. And now, of course, they're doing it. And they're, if within eight years, they will have recouped all of their investment and will be making money on the solar panels? Have you ever taken a really deep look at it? Or is it just assumption that, oh, you know?
No, no, we, we actually have. There's a couple of things, you know, Wegmans is a very good store. You know, I've actually toured their, their main facility up in Rochester. But they tend to have less open refrigeration than we do. And, you know, I, I think if we were talking about that on a new store, we could probably handle it. But, but there have been, and Doug could correct me, there's probably been 30 additions to the store since it's originally built. And the, you know, ability to, you know, tie in, you know, first of all, find adequate space for the, you know, for the panels, then tie it into the right electrical panels and the structure involved. It's just that the existing building is so complex. It's, it's very difficult to utilize. If, again, I, I, you know, in all honesty, if we were building a new building, you know, with a big flat roof, we could, we could, we could put it up there. But, but, but right now, the existing roof is, is completely full of existing equipment.
How about the parking lot?
Oh, okay. The building, a second though, Dylan, we, I have looked at that in the past for Stu Leonard's. The Norwalk building, because of its position, the varying roof height, and because of the tree lines and that, and the properties next to us, basically, we come back with like, even from the solar people, it's really not worth the investment. It's just, the building is just, you wouldn't do, build this kind of building nowadays. So, we have taken a look at it because Stu has been serious about it. And as a back, backup plan, you know, we'll take another look once the garden shop is done, if we can do anything up there, but the electrical demand in this building. And because of the additions Ray talked about, there's no simple way to tie it into our system. Because every time they did an addition to the building, there's a whole nother electrical panel they started with. And that's part of what, you know, has been our challenge for a lot of things in this building.
And the parking lot is not, you can't do a canopy of solar panels over the field parking lot? You don't got a parking lot there?
Yeah, I, I don't know that. We've never got into that because that parking lot was done in 1990, no, 1999 is when we did the parking lot. And I, I don't know. I, have I analyzed the parking lot? The answer is no. But there are, depending on which property we're on, we're on the old state DOT property versus our, there's some restrictions on the old DOT property because of what was underneath the ground. So, certain areas were okay with, certain areas were not. So, there's, you know. There's a lot of, there's 16 feet of fill on the old DOT property. But, well, you know, we can look and analyze it, but I, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I'd love a serious look at it because, you know, sustainability in the future is going to really be crucial to all of our futures. And any of these field parking lots, any of these buildings, I think we have to really take a serious look at.
And we have to, you know.
You know, you kids, my kids, our grandchildren, you know.
I, I, trust me, I'm with you. I get it. So, I'm just saying, we haven't analyzed it. We've done, you know, and to go through that would take a while. We don't know if it affects parking spaces. Can we do it here or not? Can we get enough footing in certain places? I don't, you know, the answer would be, I don't know with a parking lot, but.
Doug, could we, could we ask you to get back to our staff on this matter?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Also, I'm curious about electric vehicle charging stations. You know, Ford is, all of Ford's, I forgot the number, but they're pickup trucks. The largest selling vehicle in the United States are going to be electric next year, all of them. You know, you're going to end up with a lot of customers driving electric cars, which you don't think of today. Today, it's just a few. Have you thought about that, how you retrofitting some of those spots to provide?
Yeah, that, that is part of, there's, we have the phase that you approved, which is the farmer's market phase, and we're also doing a bunch of interior renovations. So, part of that checklist, you see if we can't locate some of those in the parking lot. That's conducive to the customer, and we can get electric to it simply.
Yeah, because it's going to, you know, it's going to happen all of a sudden. We're going to turn around and they're going to be, parking lots are going to be filled with electric cars.
We'll, we'll meet with staff and all that, go over some ideas and see what they, you know, their ideas are.
Fantastic, that's great, thank you.
If I may just ask, I'm, I'm sure that Doug would be willing, as he's already said, to evaluate, consider and talk to staff. But I certainly hope that the change to the facade, that structure that was going to be a tent that now we're proposing to be closed, does get waylaid by further discussions and evaluation of the potentiality and availability and, and efficacy of solar panels in the parking lot or on the roof. I'm certainly willing to, to investigate, but I'd like to move forward on, on getting this change approved.
Thank you, Attorney Sachi. Are we ready to move on this action? Is there a motion to approve this change? I frankly consider it a minor change.
I agree, and I move to approve it.
Okay, Richard moves it and Tammy seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, with the understanding that Stu Leonard's has always operated with Planning and Zoning Commission in good faith, we, we look forward to hearing back from you. With that, again, I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, there's six yes and one abstention. The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for all you do for the city.
Okay, 2021-29 CAM 314 Wilson Avenue. Modification request of conditions to extend operating hours of previously approved coastal site plan review for retail and restaurant use. This is the Beer Garden on Wilson Avenue. Attorney Sachi, once again?
Once again, once again. Thanks again, for the record, Liz Sachi of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy, 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stamford. I represent the applicant and owner, Crystal LLC. Also present on the line tonight is Joe Grasso, who is a principal of Crystal LLC. The property, as you noted, is 314 Wilson Avenue. It's in the industrial number-one zone and also within the CAM boundary. The request is to modify SPR CAM number 2021, which you approved last year, to expand slightly the farmer's market and beer garden hours. Now, the commission approved in July of 2021 the reactivation of the beer garden and farmer's market that had been approved years earlier, but then shut for a variety of reasons, and with also the opportunity to provide live entertainment. As of May 2020, the hours of operation right now for the beer garden and farmer's market are Monday through Friday from 4:00 to 11:00, Saturday from noon to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday from noon to 6:00. The proposal would like to change those hours to allow Monday through Friday from 11:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night. That would allow the lunch crowd to, to come to the farmer's market, but there would be no live entertainment during the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Saturday hours would remain unchanged, and they would, as, they would continue at noon to 11:00 p.m. And on Sunday, we'd like to extend the hours from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, those hours would go from noon to 8:00 p.m. if you deem it appropriate to change these times. As I mentioned before, no live entertainment between the hours of 11:00 and 4:00, Monday through Friday. All other conditions of approval would remain unchanged and enforce in effect. Just want to mention to the commission, we've received some letters that staff shared with us from members of the public, that we have not received any notices of violation from the zoning department with failure to comply with any approval or any conditions of approval, nor have we received any complaints or citations from the Norwalk Police Department or Health Department that the city's noise ordinance has not been avoided by or has been in any way violated. We have, we have undertaken decimal level readings and analyses by ARS Sound of Norwalk. One was done in March after, during an event on that day, and those noise, decimal level readings were provided to staff. There were also decimal level readings taken this past weekend, and they all have revealed that the noise emanating from the site is well within the maximum decimals that can be, that can emanate from an industrial number-one zone. So, we think it's a rather straightforward request. Opening it up from 11:00 in the morning till 4:00 during the week allows additional patrons to, to come to the farmer's market and to come for lunch. And the minimal extension of time from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday is relatively minor, in our opinion. That's the long and short of the application. I think, Mr. Schulman, you asked a question of Mr. Baker earlier. Was there a requirement last year that noise decimal meters be installed on a permanent basis? My understanding was that there were not, but that noise decimal level meter readings were to be provided if necessary or if requested. And as I just mentioned, we did that in March, and we've also just done it this past weekend. I have nothing further to add. If you have any questions of me or Mr. Grasso, we're certainly willing to answer them.
Attorney Sachi, can I ask you a question? The decimal readings that were taken this weekend, was the applicant aware that you were taking decimal readings at that time?
It's the applicant that took the decimal level readings. It, it retained the firm to do the readings. They weren't done by, by others. And if they were done, if other readings were done by others, we're not aware of those.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that situation because with the owner doing that, he could certainly have asked that the music levels be kept down during that period of time. I'm, you know, I, I read these letters from the folks who live at Village Creek, and there seems to be a real problem, even if the applicant is adhering to the requirements of the earlier approval. And I'm not sure exactly how to address that. What I would say to the folks at Village Creek, this is by way of my own experience. When I ran a bus system, two of the first things I bought were a decimal meter, which is not terribly expensive, and a speed gun, so that I could monitor my own people. Because we had a lot of complaints from the public about how much noise the buses were making and about speeding. And I found that a very valuable purchase of those two items. And I would suggest that maybe Village Creek or the organization itself may want to invest in, in a sound meter so that they can properly monitor the decimal levels themselves. This is not a terribly expensive item.
Well, I think everyone must keep in mind that the noise ordinance sets forth the parameters and the individuals that are authorized to take those readings. And the, the machine must be properly calibrated. The person taking the readings has to be properly trained in the, in taking them. So, while that's a helpful tool to see if there may be some sort of, there may be a violation, just because there's noise doesn't mean it violates the noise ordinance.
And I, I, I understand that. I personally don't have an objection to starting up a little earlier without music. You didn't indicate whether on Sundays there would be, there would be music.
We would like to have that opportunity. However, if the commission deems it inappropriate or would prefer that not to take place, my client My client has authorized me to say, well, if you allow us to operate those extended two hours, we would not provide live entertainment or anything of that sort during that two hour time period on Sundays.
Okay. I'd like to hear what the other commission members who also had access to those letters have to say. Richard, I think you're trying to speak, but you're muted.
My on.
Now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I am a little embarrassed to say that I have never been to the Beer Garden when it's been happening. Some of my bandmates have been awakened from hibernation and have actually played there. But I didn't have an opportunity to go see them. But it sounds to me like from everything I've heard about the Beer Garden that it's doing very well. It's very popular and it's very populated. And my feeling is that even if the decibel level is mostly within the city guidelines, being a new a good neighbor, especially with a profitable enterprise, would seem to me to to require you as a good neighbor to do something about the sound. And if live entertainment is what's bringing people to this venue, then it would seem to me that there would be some kind of a shell of some sort that could be constructed to keep the sound out of Village Creek. Because I can I can definitely appreciate what that must be like all night Friday, all night Saturday, and then during the day on Sunday. So that's my feeling. I I I don't know what the decibel levels are at any given point in time. But I do know from personal experience that there are a lot of noises that are within the the decibel levels that are allowed in the city of Norwalk that are seriously annoying, especially when they're constant. I'm done.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Tammy?
Attorney Satchi, could you please tell me? I've been to the Beer Garden, but I have not been there when the live music, it was, I think, for this iteration. And is the band set up sort of in that outdoor patio area?
That is correct.
Okay, and is it always live music as opposed to, you know, canned music?
Typically, it's live, live bands.
Okay.
And so that that circuit central area is surrounded by structure. So there's a natural barrier of a building already in in effect, and that's why it's located there so that it typically the noise would emanate out into the parking lot, but I can understand there's noise at end, noise travels. But once again, my client is bound by an ordinance and the ordinance sets forth parameters. And I have to submit to you that as long as he's abiding by those parameters and there's no violation issued and no citation, he's compliant. Should there be issues that the neighbors feel the noises exceeds the requirements? They are certainly well within their rights to and exercise their rights to contact the police department and have readings taken at their property line, which is the appropriate location to evaluate decibel level readings emanating from another site and reaching an adjoining property. And if there are issues, then notices of violation can be issued and citations can be issued. And if it's a problem that continues, this commission has within its rights to bring an applicant before it to discuss it. And the ultimate punishment would be revocation of the license. So there are vehicles employed. If the police department is not undertaking that role to conduct noise readings or the health department, whatever whatever agency is authorized to do so, that's a different issue. But there are vehicles that neighbors can avail themselves of to seek some redress if they feel that the noise emanating is beyond the levels.
And thank you for the explanation. Have any of the bands that have played there just, you know, been asked to actually kind of turn the volume down? I know in my neck of the woods, there's amplified concerts and things. And the neighbors do get tired and annoyed with it, and I I can very much understand and empathize with that. If you just wanna, you know, have a quiet evening. And if it's every week, week in, week out. But did anybody actually go over and ask to just say, hey, can you turn it down, so to speak? And I like Mr. Rowena's idea of some type of hood or structure that would push the sound more toward Wilson Avenue as opposed to perhaps just going straight up and then traveling across the water to Village Creek.
In answer to your first question, I don't know. I can't answer if anyone is has has called to ask the bands to reduce the to reduce the sound. I saw that there was a comment that requests were made and either they were discarded or neighbors were were not appropriately responded to. All I can say to that is that we would certainly provide to the staff the name and contact information for someone on site when bands take place, so there is a contact person that can be immediately reached by members of the the public. But as far as whether or not those calls were made, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Thank you.
I personally would be much happier extending the the hours of operation without additional music on Sundays. You know, Sunday evening, people are getting ready for the week. They, you know, trying to put kids to bed early, et cetera. You know, having a peaceful Sunday, I can really relate to the importance of that.
And that's certainly acceptable. We we understand that, and we could certainly modify our request to not have live entertainment during those expanded hours.
Is there any way to check or see about the couple of the neighbors who said they called, but nothing happened? To me, that was the most concerning thing of the of the correspondence we've got.
Sure, we can follow up on that.
Thanks.
Could we also ask the applicant if they would have the band cease at ten P M rather than eleven P M? Because oftentimes, in my experience with live music, it tends to go longer because bands start later than anticipated. So if you tell them to shut down at ten, they might not shut down until ten fifteen, ten thirty, but at least that might be better than eleven.
Well, two things. First, in response to Mr. Cantor's question, I'm not sure if any of the members of the public who raised concerns about the the extent of the noise ever contacted the police department. I don't know. The second thing is, as far as Ms. Langgallis, we have an approval that's in place to conclude at eleven P M. We're not looking to expand that, and I think those that that condition of approval stands today, and we're we're not interested in in culling that back since there has not been a demonstration that we violated the noise ordinance in any way or violated any zoning regulation or any condition of approval. So whether we get the additional, so whether you approve the additional hours or not, the eleven P M is still going to stand.
And noise ordinances are not under our purview, correct?
That is correct.
I don't know if it would if it would be worth it wherever you guys land on this, if the applicant were to work with Village Creek to contact them and kind of come up with a solution in terms of the music before. You know, and take any action or that's consideration.
I don't know if it is helpful. During now, we have an audio consultant, Daffy Holden. They design audio systems for concert halls. So that will be a really good resource. They are right on Washington Street.
Can you send that to me, Hector, and then I can?
Hector, could you repeat what you said? You're very muffled. I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
So in in Washington Street, there is a consultant, the company called Daffy Holden. They design audio halls. Like they work, they work with the net, they work with different concert halls. So that would be enough to create like the dampener, but basically that would be what needs to be done.
Further comments? Darius, did I see your hand up before?
Well, yeah, I was, it just seemed to me as if a lot of what we were discussing would be topic for the ordinance committee of the council to discuss. And this just really pertains to the hours of operation. And I have visited the Beer Garden on occasion, and my experience with the live music was that it well wasn't very cumbersome. But again, I am not a resident on that street or even in that neighborhood, so I cannot attest to how it is to live near it.
Anything else? Would it be acceptable to the commission if we were, as has been suggested, hold off on acting on this until the residents of Village Creek can sit down and talk with Mr. Grasso and perhaps Attorney Satchi and maybe a member of our staff about this matter?
Well, again, Mr. Schillman, respectfully, unless and until there's a violation, there there's really not much to discuss. We are compliant. I I I there's a noise ordinance and we abide. I I think it's it's going down a very slippery slope to say, let's talk to neighbors about something that that doesn't exist. We're certainly willing to provide them with contact information that's that's viable and legitimate and available. But to talk about something that is is not an issue right now under the city's regulations, I I think that's problematic.
But whether it's an issue under the city's regulation or not, it's clearly a problem for these residents.
But respectfully, what do we talk about? That we are providing live entertainment and we're meeting, we're meeting the regulations. The only I think, the only thing I think would come out of a a discussion would be to call back on the hours or to have a a different set of regulations and standards applied to this instant to this applicant. And I I don't think you can do that.
Or your client could decide to be a good neighbor and figure out how to not bother Village Creek so much. You know, you say that the regularly regulations are being met, but they say they aren't. Nobody's got a complaint from the police, but the police department says there's thirty officers short. So maybe noise, maybe noise complaints aren't way up on their radar. I I think it would be a nice gesture, at least to talk to the neighbors and see if something like a band shell or something about asking the bands to turn it down a little bit would help. My opinion.
I speak as Joe Grasso. How are you? Can you see me or hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you.
Okay. You, we certainly have a contact at the Beer Garden anytime if the if a neighbor wants to call that we can have the band turn it down. We constantly monitor the the area along Village Creek to make sure we're in compliance. As a matter of fact, we did it tonight, and we're twenty-four points below the allowable decibel point. So I've actually gone over to Village Creek and you can't even hear it on the road. So I really don't know. I've read the letters and I and I and I said that they can't sleep or they can't hear it. Well, how is that possible when I can't even hear it on Split Rock Road? So I'd be more than willing to meet with the with the residents and see and make sure there's a proper contact so that we can, we'll turn it down. If it's bothering somebody, we will turn it down. Again, tonight, we took decibel readings. Again, we're twenty-six points below the that you can't even hear it along the back of the property. So we will have someone dedicated. The manager is there all the time. Somebody wants a call, I will make sure it. He takes the call and we lowered the volume. Don't really know what else to do. Building a structure over, there's a structure built over it already, and there's three buildings that surround it. That's not gonna work. Being in the construction business, I know that it's not gonna work. So I I really don't know what else we could do other than take the call. I've never gotten a call. I've never gotten an email from anyone. The only emails I see are the ones that are sent to the zoning department. I've had the police department down twenty times. They come in, I walk them to the rear of the property and they look at me and go, there's no problem. We can't even hear it. So I really don't know what's going on here. I actually told the band to turn it up as loud as you can. I told three officers, will you guys follow me, please? We went along the back of the creek and you can't hear it. Can barely hear it. So I don't know what's really happening here, but we're doing all we can to make sure that we're within the regulations of the city, the ordinance, I should say. But we are here and we will take calls. We will take emails.
Mr. Grasso, it sounds as if you said you'd be willing to meet with folks from Village Creek. And I I I think that's the suggestion that was made.
Yeah, I'd be I'd be more, I would like to go into their house when the band is playing full blast and hear it. Yes, I would.
Okay, well.
Or in their driveway because. So may I just continue? I just want to tell you that when the officer went over to the person's house that was complaining, which was four houses down south from where we are, the officer was in the driveway and he said to the, I I understand it was a complaint. Do you mind coming out to the your driveway? Because we can't hear it and the band is playing loud. And that person said, I listen, we were told regardless when there was music and I noticed notices that went to the entire Village Creek that everybody had to complain to the police when there was noise, when there was a band playing. This is ridiculous. You know, the police, they're calling the police to come to our place when they could be out solving a crime or or helping individuals that need it. This is absolutely preposterous, but I will do whatever is required to meet with the neighbors and say, please, show me where it's noisy. I'll take care of it. I will definitely work with them to do that.
Steve, would it be appropriate for you to sort of sit in and organize that?
Sure, I just did get an email from somebody who said they're watching the meeting from their home right now. I don't have the address in front of me. They can hear the music, Agaros, and they've just called the Beer Garden and got no answer. So it's just an email that came to me. So I mean, it might make sense for somebody to go over there when they're actually complaining about the music to hear what they're hearing from their house. I think that's probably the solution to that.
I think they're calling the main number, which they don't have my manager's number who's on site, which will definitely answer the call.
All right, well, let's let's see that that information gets passed to the folks at Village Creek. And let's see if that makes a difference.
Okay.
That we're not making a vote on the extended hours at this time? Until after that, couldn't that be a condition of approval or something like that? It seems silly to have to come back twice.
I think it's pretty such she already explained that we are not, we are not in violation right now. I'm asking for the person that makes food to extend his hours during the day. Okay, without music, I I'm asking for an extended hour so the children and the and the people can have their dinner at six o'clock from until eight o'clock without music. So I really don't know what extending this is gonna is gonna do.
Richard? You've you've just lit up. I don't know if you want to say anything.
I I must have missed something because I thought the extended hours were for more than the cook to stay to make dinner for people. Am I wrong?
I'm sorry. We asked for extended hours for dinner from six to eight.
On Sunday.
On Sundays. I did say if, if music is an issue for the extended hours, we'll take it off the table. I won't have music. It'll stay as is. It'll end at 6:00 PM on Sunday.
I guess that would be no change then.
It only changes in the mornings, bringing it earlier, which seems totally reasonable, something starting at 11. Like that's mid afternoon.
Yeah, the only change as far as I can see is extra hours to eat. No extra hours for music. Is that correct?
Correct. No music on Sunday. Correct.
That's on Sunday, but Monday through Friday.
No music from 11 to four anyway.
No music. Okay. I mean, then I motion to approve.
Well, wait a minute. What, what about the weekend? What about Friday and Saturday? Does that, that stays the same also?
Saturday stays the same with no change and Friday, the extended hours 11 to four for the lunch and later crowd with no music. And then from four to 11, that is as already approved for the dinner crowd and for music from four to 11. That's already.
No change in the music.
Right.
I'll say it again. I motion to approve.
There are a second?
I second.
Darius seconds. Any further discussion?
I'd like to thank the applicant for being willing to work with the neighbors.
Thank you.
I think it's important to keep a good relationship with the neighbors. Sometimes it's only one, but it's important.
Okay.
All right. Let's do this as a roll call.
Sure. So this is to, in favor of the resolution with no music, no additional music hours. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pachus?
Oh, same as them.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis? I missed, I missed it, Tammy.
I'm sorry. Yes, excuse me.
And Mr. Schulman?
I'm not going to vote on this one.
Okay. So we have two abstentions and then one, two. Five in favor.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's let's move on 13-16 SP. Main Norwalk LLC, 272 to 80 Main Avenue. Extension of time request for 10300 thousand retail and garage and on-grade parking, the village. Attorney Sachi?
Thank you, Mr. Schillman, once again. And I promise this is the last you'll see of me this evening. Just for those commissioners who were not present in 27, 2016, 2017, this is the Alanco site on Main Avenue diagonally opposite Citco Station and directly to the south of the Miss Laura Raymond Homes. It's about a five acre site and in 2017, an approval by this commission for special permit was granted to allow the development of 103,000 square foot retail space with garage. There were going to be some small box-like independent storefronts in the front with a larger structure in the back. In, after the approval, the neighbors on the condominium association to the east exercised their right to appeal. Their appeal was denied by the trial court and then their request for petition for certification to the appellate court was also denied. The applicant then had a year from the appellate court's decision to secure permits. That was in 2018, 2019. I was unable to secure the zoning and building permits for a variety of reasons and we sought three extensions. This is the fourth extension of time that's before you. Much like the, the past extension last year, the delays in securing the zoning and building permits are largely due to COVID again. And those lingering impacts are very, very substantial. And I say that in this regard, when we first kind of costed out the, the cost of this project, it was about 23 million. The latest cost estimate has brought it to 35 million. And to bring that closer to home, for those of you who haven't done any construction projects, for example, wood sheathing, for example, was originally $48 for the, those sheets of wood that you see, those large sheets. That's now at $96 a sheet and just two by fours, which were originally $4 are now $12. So these cost issues are really a, a major factor in what's delaying this project moving forward. Not to mention so are just materials not being available at all. In the interim, my client has paid its taxes. It's been a good neighbor. It's secured the site. It's mowed the lawn. It's also allowed its neighbor, Miss Laura Raymond Homes, to gain access onto my client's property for it, the Laura Raymond Homes, to do some landscaping, removal of trees and try to be a good neighbor. It would like to move forward with this project, but these cost overruns due to COVID are just continuing to, to become, to be a hindrance. So we ask that you grant a one-year extension of time. This commission has in its ability and its authority to grant an extension that's less than one year, but one year would be, would be beneficial so that we can hopefully get through the COVID lingering effects. We are starting to see some of those prices come down and hopefully over the next couple of months, they will come down more significantly so we can move forward. We have Osta, Osta's District Three has approved the project. There would be substantial offsite improvements in, in excess of a million dollars and that would all improve the roadway system in front of the site and to the north of it. We just asked that one-year extension of time be granted.
Let me make some preliminary comments about this. Since this project was approved, the planning commission, the zoning commission have been combined and a majority of our members did not, never heard this proposal. In, in addition, the be perfectly upfront, I voted in favor of this. And I still think it's a good project. However, it, it was quite controversial. And I'm wondering whether the current commission shouldn't have an opportunity to, this is a fairly significant proposal, shouldn't have an opportunity to hear and act on this proposal. With, with regard to the cost issues, while I understand and can appreciate them, we've had lots of other developers who have moved forward with their projects almost immediately after they've received their approvals despite these issues. So I, that's my general feeling about it, that you know, those, those of you who haven't had an opportunity to see this and act on it should, given that this is the fourth request, have, have an opportunity to do so.
Well, Mr. Schillman, am I underst, I, I think I'm a little confused as to what your, what your suggestion is. This is not, and not a request to reopen the decision and have further discussion. That's long since been decided and that approval is in force in effect. This is just a request to extend the time. We can't reopen the hearing and, and reconduct that hearing. If the commissioners would like to hold this request open for me to provide additional information, I'm happy to do so, but that matter has been decided.
Well, what happens if we do not approve this extension? How can this project, how can this project go forward?
Well, then the applicant has a very narrow timeframe to secure a zoning and building permit. Otherwise, the, the underlying approval becomes null and void automatically.
Right. So I'd like to hear what the other commission members have to say about this.
And honestly, that would be the first time in my experience that a request for an extension of time, albeit with either a combined commission or new commissioners coming on, that anything beyond just the request for extension be, is under consideration.
I don't love the notion of relitigating and re, re-holding the approval for the benefit of just folks who weren't here for that. I think we should look at it on the merits of what it is and what the request is, not the project in the totality of that. And for that, I'm somewhat sympathetic to a costing of 25%. I can understand other people have gone and done whatever. I don't know everyone's finances and how that works. And frankly, I don't know if that's really our purview to, you know, really need to consider that, I think. But so my view would be to grant the one-year extension, given pandemic that we just came through and the fact that this site has been there for so long and it, I think, was voted fairly unanimously of approval, if I remember correctly.
There was one vote against it, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. And I could point out
Fairly unanimous.
That, that, this would not be the first time we've taken this action. I think it was High Point. The High Point project where we didn't extend, where we, we, we didn't approve an extension of, of time. So it's not precedent setting.
If you're concerned about the length of time, certainly you could do something last six months. If that gives you greater comfort.
Tammy?
Attorney Sachi, is this the Brownfield site? That is that, and does your client own the property outright?
Yes, my client owns the property outright and it is the Brownfield site on Main Ave. Exactly.
Is remediating the Brownfield aspect part of the delay?
No, as a matter of fact, that has just been resolved by, I guess was the EPA, according to one of my partners, and that component part has been, we're ready to move, the EPA has given us the green light to move forward, whatever remediation needed to be undertaken, whatever monitoring needed to be continued, that's been done. And so that's no longer an issue that would have prevented us from moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
How many extensions have you already had?
This would be the fourth.
The fourth. This could go on indefinitely.
Well, it's very similar to what you, what the, your predecessors did with the residents in on South Main Street. As a matter of fact, I think there were seven extensions of time for that hotel before it finally started construction.
So it, it can't be indefinite. There's a state statute that the site plan needs to be constructed within a maximum of 10 years after commission.
Any other comments?
How many years has it been since it was first approved?
It was approved in 2017. And then it went into litigation, which got resolved in about a year and a half. So 20, I think, 2018, when litigation was finally resolved in September of that year.
So effectively two extensions were a function of ongoing litigation, not a function of, so theoretically, had litigation not existed, the construction probably would have started pre-COVID and you probably would have had a complex already there.
Probably, probably. That's a very good observation.
Anything else?
I remember this, this hearing because it was one of the early ones that I sat on. And I remember how badly I felt for Bruce Beinfield when all the comments were that he put lipstick on a pig. I thought, I thought, I thought the design was fantastic. It reminded me of walking around in Block Island and Cape Cod. My inclination would be to, you know, grant the extension simply because while it was controversial, the appeals were, the legal appeal, the legal appeals were taken, adjudicated. And I think that the public and the board had a tremendous input on the ultimate architectural design of this project. So my inclination would be to support the request.
Anything else? All right. Well, I, I still feel the way I did at the beginning, but it appears that the commission would like to move this forward, but I would like to take advantage, Attorney Sachi, of the offer you made to describe this project at further length to the entire commission so that those members who were not on the commission at the time have an opportunity to fully understand it. And if, if you find that acceptable, we'll, we'll move forward.
Can we split the two? Like, it sounds like you're saying until that presentation occurs, attorneys, we can't vote.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying, oh, I, I trust Attorney Sachi. If she's going to make the presentation, there's, there's not a reason to hold up.
I'm, I'm happy to make an informational presentation to the rest of the commission just so that, that you're, all those who are not present during the 2017 action know what this project is all about. But certainly not tie that to action tonight. I'm, I'm happy to come back on an informal basis and share what the project is with those who are not present at that time.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, look at it as a victory lap.
That's fine.
Is there a motion to approve the one-year extension?
I'll move.
Hector, Hector got his hand up before you, Richard, and before you, Tammy. So Hector has moved and Richard has seconded. Let's do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have one abstention. So the motion passes. Steve, why don't you stay in touch with Attorney Sachi and
Certainly.
find a place on a quiet, if we have one, a quiet agenda where she can educate the commission.
That's fine.
We'll see you in 2023 on that.
Thank you all for your time this evening and for enduring me for two hours. I appreciate it very much. Enjoy the upcoming weekend.
Thank you. Okay. I cannot appoint a nominating committee because of what I now see as rather silly language in our, the new bylaws we adopted at our last meeting. I require the approval of the other two officers in order to move forward with a slate of members for the nominating committee. And I certainly have that from Galen. But Michael is away on vacation. I emailed him. But I think probably understandably, I haven't had a response from him. I will tell you who I intend to appoint. But we can't move on that and hopefully Michael be at our next meeting. I intend to appoint Galen, JJ and Richard to serve as the nominating committee. But we'll have to, we'll have to wait on that.
How does the nominating committee meet?
Pardon me?
How, how does the nominating committee meet? Is it the Zoom meeting or in person or?
I think, I think.
I thought you were hosting, Richard.
The committee, the committee members can decide among themselves how they want to handle this.
I would suggest the Beer Garden to check.
I can, I can. I can appoint a chair if you prefer. But frankly, I don't think it's necessary. I think the three of you can simply meet in whatever way you feel is appropriate and come up with a slate of officers. Once you are appointed, I would suggest if you are interested in serving as an officer, probably the best way to handle it is to shoot Steve Kleppan an email and let him know. And he And um, he will then pass that on to uh, the nominating committee. All right, but uh, we'll have to um, um, hold off on that until, again, till our next meeting. Can I have uh, approval of the August twenty-fourth minutes, please? Arous moves. Uh, Tammy, I think got her hand up first. She seconds. Um, just a show of hands, uh, all those in favor. But but by the way, I should have pointed this out long ago. We had three members of the commission uh, absent from tonight's meeting. Um, so um, the alternates um, uh, obviously um, were empowered to vote on all matters this evening. I should have said that at the beginning of the meeting. Sorry that uh, uh, I didn't have that written down, and I forgot it. Uh, next, uh, comments of the director, Steve?
Sure, I just was gonna show you um, something really quickly. Uh, just more in terms of what we were talking about with schedule. Um, and then, can you guys see that? I probably blow that up.
Yeah, would you please?
So obviously, we're September eighth. There's three items in yellow, actually four items in yellow, which we added a couple that are gonna have to get kicked down to another meeting. September twenty-first is your next meeting, which is a Wednesday. That is the public hearing for the industrial zones. I think that will be pretty well attended. Should be a lot of comments on that. Um, thirty-two Knight Street is the Lily and August retrofit for the medical office.
That's gonna come off.
What's that?
That'll come off.
Yeah, we're thinking that's gonna probably come off because of their traffic study is not gonna be complete by then. So what we'll probably end up doing is putting um, lounges on that night for the uh, public hearing. And there might be one or two of these items that kick onto that. October sixth is, we're gonna do it in two parts, so it's gonna be a long night, unfortunately. We're going to do a joint meeting with the Economic and Community Development Committee of Council to uh, go over the waterfront plan. You will actually get the waterfront plan emailed to you tomorrow night to take a look at. Uh, we'll send that out, so you guys can start thinking about it a little bit, and then we'll sometime next week, it'll probably get posted on the Norwalk Tomorrow site, so it'll be up for um, public to look at and start thinking about.
Steve, do you think we're gonna vote on the industrial plan on the twenty-first?
I don't know. I mean, you don't have to. Um, it would be good to get it done by your October sixth meeting at the latest, but it just depends on where things are at with the comments. You have the ability, it'll be set up so you can if you feel it's ready. Um, so
Oh, go ahead, sorry. No, no, go ahead.
So as, so from six to seven, you'll be meeting on the sixth with the ECD committee. And then your regular meeting will be uh, technically a special meeting on uh, at seven o'clock. I have tentatively down on there the One Cemetery Street Public Hearing. Um, that's a little bit up in the air pending uh, they're working right now with Connecticut DOT on their two alternates for um, Cemetery Street kind of uh, traffic pattern, so that's a little up in the air, so I have them on there tentatively. If not, then they probably get bumped back into the nineteenth. Uh, we have the hospital tentatively that night as well, and then if something drops off, I'll move some of these guys in yellow over to that point, and then we'll, we'll fill that up. Um, and there's a couple new applications that have come in. We have Norwalk High scheduled for the nineteenth, a few other things, I mean, so it it's definitely not gonna slow down until, you know, we'll, we'll look at at November. Brian and I have been thinking a little bit about some training, um, you know, obviously it's required, but the commission had uh, expressed some interest in doing some training. Brian and I were kicking in the shower, we're kicking on the idea of um, maybe bringing in uh, somebody with some expertise on the green infrastructure to talk to the commission about feasibility cost and impacts on development and and what really now that means, because we get a lot of secondhand information, so it'd be good to talk to somebody who's actually does this for a living and installs this and talk, can talk about paybacks, infrastructure costs, and so on. So I think that's something we'll look at to do either later this year or the beginning of twenty-three.
Even on this, oh, go ahead, Galen, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, that's great.
Yeah, that's awesome. Um, on the cemetery project, did they document anywhere how they got to the points for the extra one and a half stories? I know they, they verbally talked about it, but if they can put it down in writing, like, just so we can see the math, that would be super helpful.
Sure, I'll, I'll go back and look at the application again. I believe it's in there, but I, it's been a little while since I've looked at it, so I'll, I'll check and send the link out.
It's either on their engineering plan or their architectural plan.
Okay.
I know, I saw, okay, yeah, yeah.
Steve, I'd like uh, like you to move the election of officers to October sixth. Um, it shouldn't be an extended matter, and that seems to be what the bylaws call for.
They call for it being in October, so it could be the second meeting in October as well. And it should be really short, you know?
Exactly. And that's why I don't have any problem with it being on the sixth. I also think your deliberations will be relatively short. Um, this isn't going to take hours and hours. Okay, uh, comments from the commissioners? Nick, do you wanna say something?
Uh, I think Galen's gone too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, Nick and I have been trying, you know, talking about initiating talks with uh, others parts of the city, you know, the council, other departments, about how do we move forward together? How do we have a unified plan to uh, move forward to um, a carbon neutral future? Uh, for Norwalk, and we think that's really important, and so that's something that we're gonna try to move along, and I'm very pleased to hear from Steve that there's gonna be a presentation on sustainability. You know, that goes, that's part of it. But the whole city sort of has to move together, I believe. To get something accomplished that really makes sense in the city. So that's it.
Okay, thanks, Galen. Uh, anyone else uh, have anything to say?
Yeah, I I just wanted to um, ask Steve something quick. I didn't jump in fast enough when he was, I'm talking about the training. Um, uh, can, can we have somebody that would talk to um, some of the issues and our responsibilities regarding some of the more subjective aspects of uh, special permit applications? Like the health and well-being of the neighborhood and that kind of stuff. Um, because it seems to me that, that we've been as a commission lectured pretty well by a couple of lawyers on the last applications on, and I don't agree with them, but it would really be nice to have some backup uh, for it, other than my reading. So that's my comment. I'd lo- love to hear, you know, some people who specialize in this stuff, what their, what their opinions are.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mario and see if he, what his comfort level is, or if he could recommend somebody, but I know in general, a lot of those standards where the language is very wishy-washy or fuzzy, um, you really need to establish in, you know, and it's the same thing with any condition, that you really need to establish something in the record that points to that. It can't, it, that, the subjectivity is good on one hand, and it's kind of bad on the other, because it's like it gives you some wiggle room, but at the same time, you can't have so much latitude where you don't have something to back up a reason you voted yay or nay on something.
But on, on some of those ones that are subjective, I mean, you could, you could really have some um, you know, serious opinions on something that if you state them uh, for the record, y- y- you're not violating anything at that point. That's your opinion. Um, and it goes towards, you know, those, I, I think there's eleven criteria in the special permit. But anyway, I don't wanna beat that to death. I just, uh, that would really be interested in hearing from somebody with a serious amount of experience in that aspect.
Yeah, the one I could think of that you guys had some recent history with was, and we don't know what happened, because you know that you denied the application, they appealed it to court, but then they withdrew, was ninety-three Winfield Street. Where one of the reasons for denial was, uh, you know, centered around compatibility with the neighborhood, basically because the, you know, the scope of the project was such that everything around it was gonna be on a, a lower scale. And that would have been an interesting test case for that kind of criteria, to see what would happen.
Steve, what was the address of the property? I couldn't, you kind of bleeped out.
Ninety-three Winfield.
But that was approved, wasn't it?
Uh, the special permit application was denied. Then they appealed that decision, and then ultimately withdrew the appeal, but then resubmitted a site plan application for a lower intensity development.
Uh, Steve, as long as, excuse me, as long as we're talking about um, uh, training. Uh, I think it would also be helpful to have some additional training uh, on conflicts of interest. Uh, on those things that we can do, and and probably even more importantly, those things that we can't do and shouldn't be doing. Um, who, if anyone, we can talk to about um, uh, uh, projects uh, in front of us. Uh, and if we can talk about them, how we have to talk about them. Um, and who we shouldn't be talking to. I uh, I, I'm not sure that we all have a um, clear idea uh, about that, and those are the kinds of issues where we can get overturned in court. If uh, one of us or a group of us um, make a wrong, uh, uh, whether it's intentional or not, but make a wrong move.
Yeah, we could, I don't, there, there used to be a couple state groups that did some training on that, but I don't know if they're still offering it, but if we could do like a a FOIA conflict of interest to kind of overlap the two issues, so we could
Okay.
That could be one, and if anybody else has ideas on any kind of trainings or topic-related things, those are kind of some, that's a bold ones, plus topic-related, we'd be happy to explore that.
Okay. Um, any commission members have uh, anything else uh, do you wanna talk about?
How's the rewrite going, Steve?
I actually, meeting with them tomorrow, I gave them my, they had asked me to clarify a bunch of edits that I sent, so I gave them those. We are going, we have two meetings set up, one tomorrow, one next week, and so I should have an idea of when they'll have the next batch to us, uh, the, the actual draft to us, so hopefully I'll have an answer tomorrow, if not, then next week. I'm hoping this month, I'm fingers crossed.
You wanna shoot, shoot us an email when you know, Steve?
Certainly.
Okay.
Then the process, Steve, is you get the draft, then it comes before us, and then we make suggestions for changes in the draft. You know, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm gonna talk to the consultant about that, but what I was thinking was, we'd, you know, say just for hypothetical purposes, the draft is out at the end of the month. Um, it's gonna take you at least a month to look at it and really kind of ask all your questions, so I probably would set up like a public, we'd have it on an agenda to talk about with the consultant. Um, they can walk you through things, answer questions. Um, and then in the interim, staff would go out and and make offers to any of the neighborhood groups or any other city agency that wanted um, to have a meeting or a presentation. We would do that over like a six, eight-week period, and then come back with um, a public hearing to talk about it furthermore, and then get to, get all the requested edits into one document and send that back to the consultant to try to, uh, you know, then they, they'd make edits. I don't, I don't wanna do, have them make a set of edits and do, you know, we can't do endless drafts, so we've gotta kind of try to streamline that as much as possible.
Uh, I would entertain a uh, motion to adjourn. Richard, Richard uh, moved, Hector seconded, all those in favor? See you later in the month. Take care.
Good night.
Good one, everyone.
Night.
Night, thank you.